But they also live through us. They live through you in everything you do every day.
Getting the signs done took a lot of hard work, research and effort because much of the information on the deaths and the locations was wrong or missing. But for the officers who took over the project, it was a labor of love. In the last three months alone, the LAPD has seen the deaths of three LAPD officers: Officer Sanchez, along with Officers Christopher Cortijo and Nicholas Lee. All three died in traffic accidents.
I'm happy that he will be honored forever.
But the majority of police heroes are killed by gunfire.
My dad was killed. He worked in 77 South Central Los Angeles and he was killed two blocks from where he worked. It's one of the only unsolved officers to date.
And soon, Angelenos will also get to visit these heroes in cyberspace. Each street sign will have a number so that you can visit a virtual memorial website to learn more about those who gave their life for the safety of LA streets. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
While the LAPD continues the work of creating the department's virtual memorial online, you can go to the federal site, O D M P dot org, that honors all law enforcement heroes. Turning to a story on the arts, the Getty Museum leads the charge in a multi-city celebration of Latino and Latin American artwork. Gil Reyes has more on Pacific Standard Time, L.A., L.A.
The arts crowd gathered at downtown L.A.'s Rivera Restaurant applauding the latest multi-museum venture spearheaded by L.A.'s Getty Museum.
And will underscore the dynamism that is at the center of this region's vibrant diversity.
Pacific Standard Time, L.A., L.A. is the third installment of the popular Pacific Standard Time art exhibits launched in 2011. This latest program will run five months and will focus on Southern California Latinos, their tragedies and triumphs. It will also explore their creative roots in Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America.
From the Getty, which is the lead on this, to Lacma, Moca, looking at our small institutions and cultural affairs departments even in the city of Los Angeles, to show the history of Latin American art, to show the tradition of Latino art here in Los Angeles, and hopefully to bring visitors from around the world.
The J. Paul Getty Trust has donated $5 million to kickstart what aims to be a cross-cultural endeavor. Among the hosts: Downtown L.A.'s Chinese-American Museum, the Japanese-American National Museum, and the Skirball Cultural Center. Those venues expected to detail how Asian-Americans and Jews played a role in some of the artworks on display. Plans also call for a film series and concerts at Walt Disney Concert Hall and the Hollywood Bowl.
And it's a part of our economy, so I encourage everyone to find out more about Pacific Standard Time and get involved and visit your local gallery.
Now, this new venture is expected to create over 45 different exhibitions and events, from San Diego to L.A. to Santa Barbara. It's expected to open in September 2017. In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
For more on exhibits and showcasing venues, go to news.geedy.edu. And as Los Angeles continues to recover from the financial crisis, city officials are taking a tough stand against a couple of banks, they say, have unfairly profited from business deals with the city. Yana Kay has more.
A recent report by Fix L.A. Coalition, which represents residents, various labor groups and unions, suggests that predatory lending practices by several Wall Street banks have cost the city of Los Angeles more than $200 million in fees and payments last year alone through a transaction called an interest rate swamp. As a result, Councilmember Paul Coretts is calling on New York Mellon Bank and Dexia to cancel or renegotiate costly interest rate swap deals they made with the city in 2006 before the fiscal collapse.
New York Mellon Bank and Dexia need to do what many others have done for the sake of this city, and that is to make sacrifices, not obscene profit.
Councilmember Coretts added that if Mellon or Dexia are unwilling to renegotiate the deals, the city council should consider terminating any current or future business dealings with both parties, and asked that the banks return profits they've received since 2008.
Mellon and Dexia have been able to, in the past, and remain able, to pocket the difference of $4.8 million per year.
Officials say these loans have forced the city to make drastic cuts to services such as 3-1-1 information calls. One operator said her department has suffered major staff losses.
Such services cuts are sacrificing the quality of life of the L.A. taxpayers.
Officials say if nothing is done about these deals, Los Angeles stands to lose an additional $69 million at current interest rates because the deals are locked through 2028. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. This Week.
The Office of Finance Staff, as well as other appropriate departments, have 30 days to report back to the Budget and Finance Committee on the progress of negotiations. When it comes to green energy, the word solar usually receives a collective thumbs up, but not so as community backlash puts a planned solar project in Lakeview Terrace on hold. Gil Reyes explains why.
This residential neighborhood on Foothill Boulevard off the 210 freeway is about as rural as the city can get, with horses and horse trails, so is there also room for a 1,500-kilowatt solar farm? Residents say, "Not in my backyard."
The point is that it's a commercial plan and should not go into residential and agricultural areas.
The North Valley Area Planning Commission agrees, allowing an appeal to the proposed solar project in Lakeview Terrace. That means, at least for now, developers Ecos Energy cannot install 3,500 solar panels between two homes.
First of all, it destroys the property values. It rips up the fabric of what a community is, which is homes, families, children, and community activities.
Ecos Energy had received preliminary approval from the city planning department to take part in the DWP's feed and tariff program. It allows businesses to place solar panels on the roofs and sell energy back to the utility. But an appeal was granted because this project would put panels not on roofs but on vacant land. Local homeowners say this wastes valuable open space and spoils the equestrian vibe of the neighborhood.
It's a real test case for us to understand how it is that we're going to judge and how we're going to judge these projects going forward, and on top of that, it's a project that clearly doesn't fit this particular parcel.
Councilman Felipe Fuentes sides with residents. Eighteen ground-based solar projects are planned for his district.
I am very concerned that this is being shoved through in a stealth manner without giving adequate notice to the neighborhoods.
We contacted officials from Ecos Energy for a response. No response from them at this time. However, many Lakeview Terrace residents expect them to take action, possibly file a lawsuit against the city of L.A. in an attempt to salvage their proposed solar project. In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Councilmember Fuentes and Lakeview Terrace residents say they're all for solar energy, but would rather see the panels on the roofs of businesses, not in their neighborhood. On a recent overcast Saturday morning, Pacoima residents joined efforts with several community groups and city departments to spruce up their community, and their hard work paid off.
Discarded couches, dirty old mattresses, boxes and other trash littering the public right of way are lifted onto the garbage truck to be hauled away.
We're going to sweep the streets, pick up bulky items, and we're also going to clean up the area, make it very beautiful.
Councilman Felipe Fuentes led by example as he helped with the heavy lifting during this cleanup event in Pacoima.
If you see a problem, whether it's illegal dumping, whether it's rubbish in the street, whether it's a stray animal, whatever city problem you see, dial 3-1-1, and that's how you can clean up your neighborhood right in your own community.
But on this day, some 75 volunteers didn't just call the problem in. They grabbed brooms and trash bags and got busy, joining several city departments and nonprofit groups, including the Bureau of Sanitation, the Department of Public Works, and the Northeast Graffiti Busters to remove trash and blight from their streets.
Because I grew up here and I want to make it beautiful.
Volunteers had a big area to clean up, from San Fernando Road to Laurel Canyon Road and Paxton to Van Nuys Boulevard in Pacoima, and they did it with gusto, and an empty container quickly filled up as the hours ticked away. And it looks like, for some, it wasn't just a community event, it was a family affair.
In all, the group filled up 75 bags of trash and two 60 cubic yard dumpsters of garbage and bulky items by day's end. Well, despite large and growing numbers nationally, Asian-Americans remain underrepresented in local politics, but one group is trying to change that. In fact, they've been fighting the fight for over 20 years, Gil Reyes reports.
Among the honorees, New York City Congresswoman Grace Ming, who represents the borough of Queens. In a state as large and diverse as New York, Ming is, believe it or not, the first Asian-Pacific American ever elected to Congress in that state, and many people say it's about time.
It's an honor to receive an award for a job that I've been in for exactly 15 months, but I really appreciate it. And coming from New York, I'm always encouraged and a little saddened because in New York, I don't think we could, I always say, we don't have so many Asian-American young advocates to fill up a room like this.
But one group has been fighting the fight for people of Asian descent for years: the Center for Asian-Americans United for Self Empowerment, or CAUZ. We're at their 21st annual awards dinner at the Millennium Biltmore Hotel in downtown L.A.
One of the best things that CAUZ does is it places young interns into the offices of councilmembers, mayors, elected officials at the state and even federal level to make sure that people imagine themselves as one day being able to go in, maybe run for office, and certainly creating the future staff members even in my own office.
Compared to their large state population, California has just a handful of Asian-Pacific Americans holding elected offices. Among them, San Francisco Mayor Edwin Lee and Oakland City Mayor Gene Kwan. Here locally, the city of L.A. has never had an Asian-Pacific-American mayor and has had just one on the L.A. City Council: Michael Wu, who served the city's 13th district between 1985 and 1993. Tonight's gala raises money for CAUZ programs. The good news for many people here: A UCLA study finds more Asian-Pacific-Americans holding public office nationwide than at any other time in U.S. history.
CAUZ really brings people together and realizes the work that we've done and how far we've come, but still the work that's left undone. And to me, that's the most important thing, that the moment we become complacent is when things go backwards.
In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
To find out more about CAUZ and upcoming events, go to causeusa.org. The city attorney is asking Angelenos to boycott the Beverly Hills Hotel. Sally Field gets a star on the Walk of Fame, and a lover of trees gets a tree planted in his memory. These stories and more in City Beat.
The Beverly Hills Hotel will not play host to the glitzy and star-studded night before Oscar party this year, as human rights activists have called for a boycott of the hotel, which has ties to Brunei Sultan, who recently announced the implementation of anti-LGBT and anti-female laws that include the practice of stoning. While the hotel is in Beverly Hills, Los Angeles City Attorney Mike Fuhr released a statement calling on Angelenos to join him in boycotting area hotels owned by the Brunei government. Fuhr also called the recently adopted laws there barbaric. Sally Field, who has had an almost 50-year career that has brought her two Oscars and three Emmys, was honored with the 2,524th star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Field won her first Best Actress Oscar in 1980 for her portrayal of a union organizer in Norma Rae, and her second five years later for Places in the Heart, playing a Depression-era Texas widow.
And I can tell you right here and right now, in these last 50 years, I have not ever, not once, considered changing my mind.
Friends Beau Bridges and Jane Fonda were on hand at the ceremony to honor their friend. A man who helped plant tens of thousands of native oaks and sycamore trees throughout Los Angeles was posthumously honored by the Department of Recreation and Parks, with the tree named in his honor at Yosemite Recreation Center. The late Scott Wilson found at the nonprofit Northeast Trees in 1989 with the planting of 700 oaks at Occidental College. Since then, the organization has planted more than 70,000 trees citywide. The new tree replaces an older tree that had to be removed. Wilson passed away in 2011. Councilmember Mitchell Englander recently joined the city's Department of Transportation officials and community members to break ground on two federally funded transportation improvement projects in Granada Hills. The Balboa Boulevard-Nolwood Plaza driveway project will add a traffic signal, a vehicle entrance and exit, and new curb and access ramps to the Nolwood Shopping Center.
You know, we want to make sure the valley gets its fair share of services, but this is long overdue. The community has asked for this for a long time.
Councilman Englander also helped break ground for construction at the intersection of Balboa Boulevard and San Fernando Road to help improve traffic flow.
They put on their bike shorts and their running shoes for cycle for L.A.'s Best. Yana Kay takes us to an event benefiting L.A.'s after-school program.
Julia Richter is working up a sweat as she cycles for a fundraiser benefiting the city's after-school program, L.A.'s Best.
It's amazing. What better way to support the community than to get out here and be at a school and enjoy the good weather and get some exercise all at once?
Nearly 100 participants got their hearts pumping on these stationary cycles at Leo Palidi Elementary School, which hosted the fifth annual Cycle for L.A.'s Best event. For the first time since the fundraiser began, the event was held outdoors.
Fundraising for the kids made me feel great because I was able to give back to a program that provides so much for the kids in L.A.
L.A.'s Best is an after-school enrichment program that provides tutoring, activities, and field trips to more than 28,000 kids in L.A.
Helping us as educators complete the job, to finish the student and produce students who really are college and career ready.
With the kids cheering them on, the cyclists raised more than $100,000 for L.A.'s Best, exceeding expectations, and the event also showed them the importance of staying active.
Helped get the kids to move around and really get them to focus on good eating habits, good exercise, just to get outside and play and have fun and have a healthy lifestyle.
A fundraiser that truly benefits the body and the soul. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. This Week.
L.A.'s Best officials say the outdoor fundraiser was a great success and are considering doing it outside again next year. And in this week's list of things to do: A hike to Magic Tree at Griffith Park, free boat tours at the Port of Los Angeles, and an Indian Rhino encounter up close and personal.
The Port of Los Angeles will be offering free boat tours on Saturday, May 17, as part of annual World Trade Week activities. It takes place from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at two locations: the Los Angeles Maritime Museum, located at 600 Sampson Way, Birth 84 in San Pedro, and Vanning's Landing at 100 East Water Street in Wilmington. Reservations are not required for the free boat tours, which will board on the hour on a first-come, first-served basis. More information can be found by going to portoflos angeles.org. There is always a lot to see and do at the Los Angeles Zoo, but you may not know about this additional opportunity: A chance to meet Randa, the zoo's beloved Indian Rhino, up close and personal. The Indian Rhino Encounter Tour takes you behind the scenes with the Rhino and may include touching and feeding the Rhino. The tour requires a separate fee in addition to the zoo's admission and is available every Saturday, Sunday, and on holidays at noon to the first 25 participants who purchase tickets. For minimum age requirements and other details, go to lazoo.org/visit/showsandactivities for more details. Griffith Park Ranger Ernie Ibarra will be leading an advanced hike on Sunday, May 18. The eight-mile trek, which includes steep inclines, will take participants to the Magic Tree. There will be a lunch break where you can enjoy your packed lunch and listen as the ranger shares the history of the Magic Tree before the group takes the same path back. The hike will depart at 8:00 a.m. Meet at the Griffith Park Observatory parking lot located at 2,800 East Observatory Road. For more information, email the ranger at ernie.ebarra@lacity.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
Union Station celebrated quite an anniversary recently, and train lovers and community members helped mark the special milestone. Siobhan Burton reports.
On May 3, 1939, half a million spectators participated in the grand opening parade for Union Station. The first weekend of May, thousands of Angelenos put on their party shoes to celebrate not only National Train Day, but also the historic 75th anniversary of this beloved landmark.
Los Angeles could stand proud as you look at this building, 75 years old. What it did, what it consolidated, the Santa Fe, the Southern Pacific, and the Union Pacific.
The anniversary, which also commemorated the importance of trains in our ever-mobile society, included fun and games for the entire family. The party kicked off with a ceremonial cake cutting and featured the Amtrak Exhibition Train, reel and model trains, live entertainment, and dancing. Architect John Parkinson designed over a dozen L.A. landmarks, including L.A. City Hall, the Memorial Coliseum, and Union Station. A John Parkinson biographer explains.
If you come in here, you can see that this station is, it's a time capsule. It's like if you walked in here 75 years ago, it wouldn't look that much different.
So the next time you visit Union Station, be sure to take a moment to notice the more than 75 years of historic beauty that surrounds you. Siobhan Burton for L.A. This Week.
The celebration of Union Station continues with an art show at the Public Central Library, where original drawings and photos of the station will be on display through August 10. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
During California's next major earthquake, an epic battle will take place. Don't fight a brick. The brick will win. DareToPrepare.org.
Bulky item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. Offering your taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomfield, Banda, Buscano, City Attorney, Engler, Francis, Weesar, Caress, Corrine, Labanz, Martinez, Ferro, Parks, Price, Westen, 10 members present in a quorum. Mr. President?
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Caress moves. Ms. Martinez seconds. So ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weesar moves. Mr. Bloomfield seconds. So ordered.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be time for the flag salute.
I'd like to ask Ms. Martinez, the great councilwoman from the San Fernando Valley, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please all rise, face the flag of the United States.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, before getting into today's agenda, there's been a request from member to continue Item 1E to May 27. Again, 1E to May 27.
Without objection.
Very good, sir. Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing, and we do have cards.
Mr. City Attorney, just because it's a notice, do we have to take public comment on the notice? I'm looking for efficiency now. The committee on efficiency.
If the hearing had already been held in committee, you do not have to. If it has not been held, then you have to take cards.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you. So set that aside. Next item?
Very good, sir. Items 2 through 12 are items for which public hearings have been held. For Items 9 through 12, they were submitted without recommendation, and motions are required.
All right, let's go through 2 through 8, correct? Mr. Clerk, there any specials? 2?
2, yes.
2 is special for Mr. Buscano. Next? Any other specials, members? 2 through 8? 2 through 8, so C, none. 2 is special for Mr. Buscano. Let's, on the balance of those, let's open the roll on 2 through 8, Alan. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes, so ordered. Now, the other items need motions by, please give me the information on that.
They were heard in the Rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, and those matters for Items 9 through 12 have been submitted without recommendation. I believe Mr. Parks would like to address the counsel.
The issue is that if there is no questions, I would move that 9 through 12, we adopt the CLA report. If there are questions or issues, I'll just call it the 4 special.
We'll call them special, Mr. Parks. Thank you so much. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to Items 13 through 21. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, so let's, for consideration, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes, so it's before us now. 18 and 19 have to be special, so lay that out.
Mr. President, we have cards on Items 13, 14, 15, 19, 20, and 21. That leaves 16, 17, and 18, sir.
All right, good. 18 special. So, Mr. Caress?
9 through 11 special?
9 through 11 special, thank you. Any other members? Is there any balance on that, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, we do have 16, 17, and 18 before you. You had previously mentioned something in regards to Item 18. Did you wish to hold that matter special, sir?
You hold that special, 18 special.
16 and 17, sir.
16 and 17, so let's open the roll on 16 and 17. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Next item.
Mr. President, it's a bit too early for today's special meeting. That takes counsel back to presentations.
Let's have presentations right now, and I believe we have a presentation from the great Councilman of the 15th District. Is that correct, Mr. Buscano? You're going to come up. I'd rather see you read paper than read a machine. That's what I say, but you're going to read a machine, so I see it in your left hand. Joe Buscano, great Councilman of the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this week, we are celebrating National Small Business Week, and we are here to recognize MCS Solutions and for their incredible work that they're doing at the Harbor Business Source Center. And here representing them, Dr. Phil Starr, the Executive Director of MCS. For the past 50 years, the National Small Business Week is designed to recognize the nation's top small businesses, entrepreneurs, and business advocates. The White House hosts a number of events throughout this week. Little background, here in Los Angeles, the LA Business Source Centers offer new services and cohesive goals, including specific job creation and job retention outcome goals, ability to assist businesses in navigating city services such as permits, regulations, certificates, federal, state, and local procurement assistance, monitoring and evaluation systems, capacity to provide access to capital, marketing tools, one-on-one business consulting by professional consultants, marketing of federal, state, and local business incentives, the BAVN Registration and Benefits, which is a business assistance virtual network. And centers across the city and around our districts are operated by different organizations, but all serve under the umbrella of the Community Development Department and the Mayor's Office of Small Business. And the city of Los Angeles is home to over 325,000 small businesses, the largest small business community in the country. We have heard, we've heard around this horse, you say that the small businesses are the backbone of our economy, and we need to continue to support our local economy and need to support our small businesses, including the business owners, and provide them with the tools they need to grow their businesses, create jobs. National Small Business Week is a time to make sure our entrepreneurs know about the services that are offered at each of the nine Business Source Centers throughout the city. You hear Mayor Garcetti say over and over that, a great fact, that here in the city of Los Angeles, 40 apps are created each day. We have some high school students here. You guys have your cell phones here? Pull them out. I want you guys to all download my 311 app. But it's incredible, and we do this, the technology that's available to our young people. And we are the app capital of the world. I wanted to say that. We can take credit for that, right, Mike? Let's do that. Let's say it. Silicon Beach. Yes. Rogers has his app. Here we have Dr. Philip Starr of MCS. I want to invite him and thank him for all he's doing in the harbor area to support our entrepreneurs and our new businesses coming in to the city. Help me welcome Philip Starr.
Thank you, Councilman. Well, you've said just about everything about our Business Source Centers. We're one of, our one in the harbor is one of nine throughout the city. Our agency also runs one in the Hollywood area and mid-city, as well as the harbor. And our passion, our goal in the Business Source System is to help this entrepreneur, the startup business and small businesses grow and expand. And we've been active for about seven years doing this service for you, and in the last three years, we've been the Business Source System. In the harbor, for example, we've served 143 startups. These are small individuals or families that are just starting a business, and help them with all kinds of consulting and access to capital, and they've launched their business, and we've helped them gain about $300,000 in loans. In addition, we've helped 193 small businesses and medium-sized businesses, and helped them access over $7.1 million in funding. And this has resulted in over 170 jobs, actually 172 jobs, being created in the harbor region of Los Angeles. And these are good jobs. These are jobs that help grow business and help grow the local economy. So we really, on behalf of our organization, we are just delighted that you are funding the Business Source System so that we can provide these services to your constituents and ours, and help them grow their businesses and help create more prosperous communities, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we thank you very much, small businesses are the lifeblood of our city. Mr. Buscano?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to recognize my small business liaison in my office, Anna Dragon, who has worked hand-in-hand with MCS at the harbor area and other businesses and other chambers across our district. So thank you so much, Anna, for your commitment. So on behalf of the entire city, we recognize MCS Solutions in recognition of our celebrating National Small Business Week.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, you can get right here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscano. Mr. Mitchell Farrell for a very special introduction.
Mr. President, colleagues, we have some very special visitors here today from the great 13th District, from Atwater Elementary School. Kids, if you could please stand.
And Atwater.
And helping to represent the Cubs today is teacher Kira Craig. Ms. Craig? She deserves a round of applause. She's the teacher, folks. And we also have, yes, we have a couple of parents with us, Maria Garion and Manuela Bayon. They're here somewhere. And then we also have teachers aides Maria Perez and Patricia Alfaro. Welcome, everyone. Thank you, and enjoy your tour of City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. Mr. Engler, now we call you on, Mr. Farrell. We thank you, Mr. Engler from the 12th District.
Come on up. Yep, right behind me. Absolutely. No, girls are first, I'm sorry. We're bringing the girls up first. Hey, guys, come on all the way, everybody, everybody. Coach Kelly up here? Absolutely. This is awesome. So we have the Chaminade basketball teams before us, and it's been said that things happen in three. This is the trifecta. This is the hat trick. This is back-to-back-to-back, which is awesome. And I'm really proud, and not just because they won the state championships. They have three state championships at Chaminade in one year. This is absolutely the best school, bar none. I don't just say that because both my daughters go there. I say that because of all the winners behind me. In April, we honored the Chaminade High School Division II State Football Champs at Van Nuys, and today, it is basketball's turn, both the girls and the boys. But first and foremost, our young ladies. Led by a 2014 California Coach of the Year, Kelly DiMuro, after 17 years at the helm, Coach Kelly has compiled a 125-72 record. This is the first state championship at Chaminade. During the 13-14 year, they compiled a 29-4 blowout and were ranked sixth nationally. During the 2014 Division II tournament, Chaminade beat three-time state champions Archbishop Mitty from San Jose in an 80-51 incredible slam dunk. 80 to 51. Yeah, that deserves a round of applause. It's huge. We are joined here as well, not only by the team, well-represented, but we also have some key players that I'd like to highlight. First and foremost, sophomore Valerie Higgins, Division II All-State CIF Open Division First Team, first-place Team All-Area Daily News Mission League MVP. Let's give a round. Give it up for Valerie. Where's Valerie? Come on up. There she is, right here, to be recognized. We also have senior Kylie Fandino, Second Team All-Area Daily News, Cal State Northridge is where she's going to be going. And you're going to Pepperdine, correct?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, you're, oh, no, not yet. You're not a senior yet.
Undeclared, yeah.
Undeclared, undeclared. So many offers, trying to figure it out. All right, and you're, and where's she at? Come on up here. Let's give her a round of applause. And our senior Natalie. Valenzuela, Team All-Area Honorable Mention, Daily News, Mission League II, and she is going to Chico State. Natalie? All right. Awesome. And another senior, Krista Fandino. Any relation?
Twins.
Twins. Twins. Attending CSUN in the fall, let's give it up for Krista. Awesome, fantastic. So these girls are not only incredible ballplayers and team players, but they have put so much time and energy back into the community, back in their academics, ensuring, now, this is a very difficult school as well, college preparatory school. The academics are grilling, let me tell you right now. I know firsthand, I've got a senior graduating this year from that school. So these girls, to carry the banner for Chaminade all the way to the state championships while maintaining an incredible, incredible level of academic study and focus and energy and charisma and team spirit is unprecedented, and they deserve a huge LA City round of applause, our true angels of the city of Los Angeles, our state champions, Chaminade Girls Basketball. Now, on behalf of the city, I'd like to ask Coach Kelly to say a few words as well and give you a certificate.
Thank you so much. This is such an honor. We're honored to be here. The girls, they've worked really hard to get to this point, and we just say thank you to you for recognizing us and to having us here. It's, we're overwhelmed by the generosity and just to see us here, so thank you so much.
All right, not to be outdone, so we're going to ask, okay, we can take them to the back.
No, they should see the boys get a reward.
You can go over here. Let's sit over here. Now, we're going to bring the boys up. Not to be outdone.
Title IX, good job. Let's hear it for Title IX Women's Sports.
Let's give them a round of applause. So you guys come on, go over here and sit down. All right, guys, come on up. You guys can stand behind me. Can you see over my head? All right, I got some light bulbs to change, too, so it's perfect. Look at these guys. Wow. The boys, not to be outdone, the boys 2013-14 Division III championships are champions. These young men, or Chaminade, have led by a five-year coach, Todd Wolfson, who has compiled a 93-31 record over that time. He's also the youngest coach in California history to win the state title. This is incredible. Where's Todd? He's back there as well. Come on up here. Absolutely, congratulations. This is phenomenal, and this record is incredible. Under his leadership, the Eagles Boy Squad won the state Division II title with a 27-6 record, beating the Drake Pirates. This is the first state title, the Boy Squad, who finished the year ranked 11th overall in all divisions. We've got some key players here as well. Sophomore Trevor Standback, any relation, by the way? Is your sister? Brother-sister team champions, by the way. His sister was just up here. His sister was just up here. This is pretty cool. Sophomore, I can imagine the one-on-one games at home. Who wins those? I already know who wins. She does, no question. Ranked in the top 10 in the state, won Frost Player of the Year in the state this year, and was named as a soft All-American. Let's give it up for Trevor. I'll say high five, but I won't be able, I need a stepping stool for that. Senior Jack Williams, All-CIF and All-State player, averaged 16 points per game. He was the John Wooden Award winner, and he's attending Long Beach State. Let's give it up for Jack. Wow, what do these guys eat? This is awesome. Michael O'Ginni hit a shot, this is amazing. He hit a shot, it sent this team to the state finals. It's seen all over YouTube. He did it at the half-court to win the game. He averaged 21 points per game in playoffs and has, of course, multiple offers. So, let's give it up for Michael. Him, I can high five. All right, I like that. We get a low five. All right, there we go. All right, we also have a special thanks and recognition to our principal, Scott LaPerry, and our athletic director, LaPerry?
It's Steve LaPierre.
Oh, Steve, Steve LaPierre. Steve LaPierre. And our athletic director, where's Todd? Let's bring up Steve and Todd. All right, thank you very much. Congratulations. And, oh, congratulations. I'd like somebody to say a few words, so Coach?
Sure. Just want to thank everybody for having us here today. It's an honor to be here, and thanks to Councilman Englander for having us out, and we really appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Yeah, where is it?
For you.
Oh, look at this. Wow. Oh, that is very cool. That is great. Oh, this is great. This is awesome.
That's a great picture right there. We have one problem, Chaminade, our city attorney must rule on this. Mr. City Attorney, could you rule on it, please?
I think they deserve all the applause that they can get right now.
What year, what year did you go to Chaminade there, City Attorney?
1977.
1977, there you go. Your name, tell them your name, so they can look you up in the airbus.
Dean O'Connell.
Dean O'Connell.
But we were not very good back then.
No, no, you're not as good as they are now. Never say that. You're not as good as they are now. Champions!
By the way, I just have to give a special shout-out to Todd's daughter as well, a good friend of my daughter, is accepted and going to the Juilliard School. One of only, how many applicants?
Twelve girls.
Only 12 people were accepted this year. His daughter's one of them, which is awesome. So, this is a great school, great champions, our state champions. Let's give it up for Chaminade.
Chaminade, let's go, good job. Sergeant, we're going to help him through the back. Move that table, Brian. 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 Move the table, so you get through there. Thank you. What a great job, Chaminade. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, let's begin the agenda today.
That brings us to item one, called Special for Cards.
Let's have that first card right there. Felix Ramos, please. Felix, please come forward. And Ashman and Adam, is that correct? You're following, thank you, gentlemen. And Javier Dominguez. Javier, followed by Mr. Walsh. Please.
What's going to be the case? What's the question?
Yeah, translation's right here. Translation. Thank you.
I'm here because I have a hearing at the address 1547 something Torrey Street. The reason why I'm here is because an inspection is going to take place by the Department of Building and Safety. Up to date, three inspections have taken place, but I hadn't, I didn't have the knowledge that they were taking place because... I was separated from my wife for the last five years. She, when I separated from my wife, it's been five years, she kept the house, and she stayed in the house, but she was unable to make the payments on the house. She was at the point of losing the house, so I had to take over the house, and I spoke to the bank to get a loan modification. And all this happened while the three inspections took place, and I had no knowledge, and the three inspections were done by an inspector from the Department of Building and Safety. And now that I finally have knowledge of it, there's a balance owed of $4,000 and I am here to find out what remedies I have available to me. There's a guest house in the back that is not permitted. And I believe that's a reason why we're here, because the illegal guest house in the back. I am willing to tear down the house, and also, I was in the hospital. I was in the hospital for a month, and the problem now is I do not have that amount to pay the balance.
Okay, so if you could right now, we're going to continue this in the request of Councilman Fuentes. Mr. Fuentes, you want to rise to just ask for the continuance? We'll order it. Two weeks? Very good. Councilwoman, two, thank you so much. Continued for two weeks.
And, Mr. President, two weeks is May 27.
Thank you very much.
And for clarification, that's item 1B.
Now, we have Ashman and Adam, is that correct? Please, correct me. Thank you.
Good, we were never notified. We were never notified. About the V, there was a tenant that we had that was there, and she didn't, not only didn't pay us our rent, she owes us $40,000 now that we'll probably never get the money for, and we had to get her kicked out of the rear possession.
And as per this agreement, she is responsible to pay any fees to the city pertaining to the property.
What is it?
The hardship. We think that the amount is extremely high, according to that.
And it's causing us hardship, so we wanted to try to negotiate something out with you guys.
Mr. Carets, this is in Encino, I believe in your district on Ventura Boulevard. Would you like a few weeks to look at this and then come back?
Yeah, we could just ask to continue this item.
If you would like, we could talk to you about it a little bit, and then you could go do your work, or homework.
Well, you'll talk to my staff person, and then we'll...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, without objection. Thank you.
And again, that's item 1D, and that's been continued to May 27.
And now, we have Javier, Mr. Walsh, please. Javier Dominguez, is that correct, Javier?
Mr. President, it would appear the card is from a Javier Dominguez, 2314 South El Sache Avenue.
9006, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, he is not here on that particular item. We do have one more public comment called for Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is my favorite part of the meeting. What you have just seen is, there's a list of landlords who allegedly did not repair code violations, and the tenants are no longer paying their rent to the landlords, they're paying it to the city. Again and again, we see people coming up here who are totally innocent, like the last two people, who were failed, you failed them on the bureaucratic level, they don't know what's going on, they come here, and if you watch the show, then the city council person talks to them, and everything is smoothed out. You don't see them coming here twice complaining, you see them coming once. And Armando here, Erman, always briefs these people so they understand what's happening. If they take your property away and stop, if you're a HollywoodHighlands.org, HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, so, Mr. Clerk, on A, on C, and F, I believe that's eligible for our vote in front of us, the others, we continue?
That is correct, sir.
Correct. So, on those items, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Ms. Martinez, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to welcome the Latina Public Service Academy to City Hall today. Please rise. This program provides government and public policy training and instruction to 20 female high school juniors and seniors from low-income communities. Welcome to City Hall.
Very nice welcome, Ms. Martinez. Thank you, welcome, young ladies, thank you so much. Mr. Busta Hino, we've got item number two next, which you called special. Mr. Clerk.
You tee it up?
That brings us to item number two, called Special for Councilmember Busta Hino.
Thanks, Alan. I'd like to invite Mr. Jeremy Irvine to the table. Before you, I also want to thank Mayor Garcetti for...
Jeremy, come around.
At the table here. For bringing forward an individual who loves, has a deep passion for, to serve our city of Los Angeles. Want to thank the Plum Committee, Mr. Englander, Mr. Sadio, for approving Mr. Irvine in committee. And Jeremy, tell us a little about yourself, your skills, your knowledgeable, and how you plan on bringing forward to the table, serving at the Cultural Heritage Commission.
Thank you very much, Councilmember, for the introduction, and thank you for giving me a moment to speak and introduce myself. I've been a resident of Los Angeles for over 15 years now, and after earning a bachelor's degree from Woodbury University in architecture and working in several architecture and interior design firms in Los Angeles, I've had the opportunity to learn and become familiar with a number of properties and buildings in Los Angeles that have inspired me, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to share everything that I've learned and share with others the gems that have inspired me so much. I should also say that I've recently started my own small business, as you were just speaking about. I also want to say that I'm very proud of my home state of California, and my family's made a number of contributions here. My great-great-grandfather came to California in 1848 and bought the land in what is today Orange County that became later the Irvine Ranch. My grandfather started the James Irvine Foundation, as well as the Irvine Company, and my grandfather created a master plan for the Irvine Ranch that was one of the first master plans, is still today one of the largest master plans, and is still being implemented now. I look forward to working with the staff, the other commissioners, and members of the public on monuments and proposed monuments for the city. The Survey LA brings us to an interesting moment in the history of preservation in L.A., because we'll soon have the opportunity to consider monuments before they're considered for demolition. This makes the job of preservationists more proactive and less reactive. With my background in interior design, I hope to bring a whole building sort of perspective to the commission, so that we can look at preserving some of the really great interiors that Los Angeles has, as well as the exteriors, interiors like the one that we're in right now. And this is important because architecture is a three-dimensional experience, it's not just about facades or what's facing the street, it's about what's inside and moving around buildings. At the same time, I believe strongly that the best way to preserve a building is to make it indispensable to its users by thoughtfully modernizing it and keeping it up to date. I look forward to serving my city, and I'm really honored to have this opportunity to do so. And thank you again for giving me a moment to speak up here.
Thank you, Mr. Irvine. Thank you for your commitment to serve our great city, and obviously, colleagues, you've heard that he brings forward the experience and the knowledge to sit on this commission. And for us, it's personal for the CB15 family, Jeremy's fiancee, Dennis Gleason, is my policy director, and we are so proud of you. We are so proud of this effort and your commitment to step forward and serve on this commission and serve the great city of Los Angeles. Colleagues, I ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
Very good. I just, one pop question. Before there was Orange County, what county was it in? You're right, Los Angeles County. Good job, it was. That's the truth. All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Good job, good job. Love your enthusiasm.
Thank you very much.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 13, called Special for Cards.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, I just tweeted @HollywoodDems. This again is, I know you get really uncomfortable when I compliment you, but remember, I'm not here, "I hate you, I hate you, I hate you, I'm a white man." I'm not that kind of person. I'm a leftist. I'm for socialism. And let me tell you right now, you do a great job on this REAP. This is item 13, and all of the REAP process, you're doing a fantastic job. And Jackie Goldberg was the person who started this many years ago, and it protects tenants. And I've been a tenant at the same address since 1976. And I've been a tenant at the same address since nineteen seventy-six. Thank you very much to each and every one of you, HollywoodHighlands.org. I won't be nice next time.
Miriam Folger from Birmingham High, Miriam, you're next.
I want to let you know that I had a hard time getting down here, so I'm here. Hi, Nury, I'd like to speak to you for a minute. I want to say is that we need a comprehensive housing here where owners and renters can get along. I think there should be some way of bridging the gap because after all, if you're gonna, you realize, if they vote on bonds, if you put something on the ballot, it's going to affect their rent. So you want to do this REAP, the people need to be aware that they need to be caring about each other because the landlord has got to care about the renter and the renter's got to care about the landlord because if you don't, then what kind of housing do we have in the city? So I want to save the rest of my time, thank you.
Donna Perman.
Yes, my name is Donna Perman. Yes, I completely agree with her, the people, the renter and the owner, manager has to be able to come into an agreement, they have to be able to get along, and if we can't have any bond issues because that will make all our rents go up, so it's just not the homeowner that will get rammed, it goes through the first to the apartment owner, they raise their rent, their portion, and then they pass it on to the rentor. And yeah, so it was very difficult coming over here, it was very hard to find parking, so we had to go way in the back for parking, so this is not an easy spot for us to get to. Bring back Van Nuys video conferencing now.
Okay, so there's no other speakers on that, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to item fourteen, called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh.
Minute three, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighland.org. I go through all of this, this is bonds, there are three, there's thirteen, fourteen, fifteen bond issues here. One is a waste of money, elephants of Asia exhibit, one million dollars quarterly payment. We don't need to spend money on Asian elephants, let Asia do it. Next, there's some good ones here. One is a seismic retrofit for Hollyhock House. Not much money, but that is a very, it's been sitting there. Hollyhock House could fall apart in the slightest tremor. And then deobligate, the worst one here is that we got in place a widening of the sidewalk on Lincoln Boulevard and Venice. This takes out the six-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars, so the traffic, remember, traffic is all accounts in this city, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you very much. No other speakers on the queue, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes.
Mr. President, that brings us to item twenty, called special for cards.
Good. Is this Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman? Sergeant, do you see Mr. Herman? Is this your card?
Pass.
Pass, thank you. No cards on item twenty. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Next item, Mr. Clerk. Twenty-one?
Mr. President, that brings us to item twenty-one, called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh. Thank you.
The worst-run outfit under you, this city council, by far, by far, is the Lawa. Even sounds wimpy, Lawa. It is the worst, ask any jet pilot, ask any airline, go to Patagonia Airlines and say, "What's the worst airport?" First of all, number one, of course, would be a terrorist airport in Pakistan, number two would be this airport. People running around, El Centro, Central American shot to death out there, everything's out of control and it comes down to one thing, we do not need two police forces out there. We need the LAPD, get rid of the phony police force out there, one police force only, HollywoodHighlands.org.
That completes public comment. No speakers on the queue, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item nineteen, called special for cards.
All right, Mr. Walsh, please.
John Walsh at J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is the most pathetic of all of the items. I remember when we had a team in Los Angeles, remember the Rams? You want to see them now? Go to St. Louis. Now, I was up here when it used to be, who was running things in those days? Bradley. And Bradley said, "The L.A. Rams have left L.A., but we should have a team within two years." Then he disappeared. Then we had Reardon as mayor. The L.A. Rams left town, we should have a team back here within five years. Then Villarreal came in. L.A. has lost, we've lost the Rams, we should have an NFL team back here in ten years. Now we have Garcetti. We'll never get a team back here, twenty or thirty years, Garcetti will be an old man. But what is the next best thing, according to you fools, and I want to say this to everyone in America, no NFL team here, it's too dangerous. What this is, is they're going to bring the NFL draft to L.A. Well, none of the, why would they have it here? There are no NFL teams. I mean, look, this, now I want to tell you what they're saying, come to NFL, come to L.A., there are lots of good prostitutes here, big high, male prostitutes, female prostitutes, lots of drugs, have all the NFL draft here, have a big party, and then leave again because you're never going, not in my lifetime, but in the lifetime of the youngest person on this city council, you will not get a team in this city, of course, all of the United States understands, stay away from L.A., HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Herman.
Los Angeles Live as the next venue for the next NFL draft that the NFL Commissioner Roger Goodell considers, but we, the public, Angelenos, and all you who reside in Los Angeles are aware that we don't need a team right now at a time of a deficit, ceiling collapse, a drought. So let's take it back on the report, and the report is this from the public, and I represent and advocate for the public, is fix the Coliseum if you want a team, keep the team in the Coliseum. We lost the Raiders, we had the Rams, we have no Lambs, now we got sheep, fifteen sheep that can't make the right decision for this city. Fifteen you little sheeps, you little bah, bah, yes. So my point of view of all this is that we need David Evans for State Controller to bring back the real commission of how to fund programs, services, activities in Los Angeles. I'm on topic, Dion. It's right here, LeBonge, Price, and Mr. Wesson relative to supporting Mayor Eric Garcetti and the National Football League for the efforts of bringing the 2015 NFL draft to the city of Los Angeles. So irrelevant, Dion, I am on topic and I have the reason to come back and redirect my topic to this point. We, the city of Los Angeles, do not want an NFL team until you can fix the budget, until you can guarantee the budget, until you can tell the taxpayers that we will provide you, the citizens, an NFL team based on what the owners will pay, not what the taxpayers will pay. So bring back the Coliseum, bring back the grandeur of the Coliseum, and we will live L.A. Live.
Miriam Folger.
I wish I was a Folgers, but I'm not a Folger, I'm Fugler. I want to just say that the taxpayers cannot be on the hook for any football, basketball, baseball, hockey, the sports, the Staples Center is public property and you have no right to turn it over to these venues and then say it's private property, okay? You can't say it's not. You're kicking out the workers, the city workers out of there, it's not right. What I'm saying is that you need to have the Coliseum because that's a very good sports, sports arena.
Ms. Folger, just to hold your time there, this is about asking that the NFL, they'd like to conduct their collegiate football draft at L.A. Live. It's not about the Coliseum, it's not about anywhere else, it's in the Staples Center area. Continue.
Okay, why are we doing that if we don't have an NFL team? Why are we having this NFL draft?
I'll visit with you after council if you want a breakdown on the draft and all that stuff, Miriam.
Because we should have a football team, but it should be paid for out of their money. They want to invest in L.A., that's what we need to do.
We agree.
And that way we can have a draft here. But we have to clean up the city, too.
Donna Perman.
She didn't make any corrections with the males, do I, do you only come up with the females? Anyway, I don't, I think this is a big waste of time having a draft done in Los Angeles as a slap in the face that we don't have a football team and I don't want a football team unless the taxpayers pay for it and not the, I mean, I mean, the taxpayers don't pay for it, make it clear. I want to have it, if the taxpayers don't pay for it, that it's done privately. Because, but in the meantime, I don't know why we're wasting with football time when we already have a nice hockey team, we have a nice basketball team, and a nice baseball team, so we're wasting our time doing this draft and I'd like to know if that's going to cost the taxpayers any money. In the meantime, I just want to say real fast that Convention Center, we didn't even, that's owned by the taxpayers and that's a second mortgage on and they're going to go on a third mortgage. So just basically, the city council wants to bankrupt and wants to sit around and have useless things like this draft because I haven't seen any reason why to have it and we need to bring back video conferencing and Van Nuys. Thank you.
Okay, that completes public comment. Open the roll on this. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes. Mr. Clerk, could we go on the special right now?
Yes, sir, we could. Bloomfield, Bonner, Buscayino, Sadio, Leonard Fontes, Wezar, Kareska, Corian, LeBonge, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, fifteen members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, first item.
Mr. President, that brings us to items twenty-two and twenty-three, they're items which public hearings have been held. There is an amending motion for twenty-two, that's twenty-two A, motion Martinez-LeBonge that has been circulated and is now before council for its consideration.
Great, there are, public comment has been satisfied, let's, no speakers on the queue, let's open the roll. Yes, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President.
Hold the roll, hold the roll.
Did, would you like to vote on both items now? So that would be twenty-two as amended and twenty-three?
Very good, Mr. Clerk, very good. Is that okay with the city attorneys? There's, there's no cards. No cards. You have a question, sir? Go to the ropes and ask, ask right there, real quick.
There you go.
On twenty-three. So let's vote on twenty-two right now, Alan. We do have a card on twenty-three.
Mr. President, twenty-three, a public hearing was satisfied in committee four.
Got it, so I'll talk to the gentleman at the rope since the card's ever been there. You go over there and we'll talk to you, it's already been satisfied in committee. Mr. Clerk, are we clear?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes, thank you very much. Next item.
And, Mr. President, that was twenty-two as amended, and now that brings us to item twenty-three, sir.
Now we're at item twenty-three and there has been public comment on that and the city attorney is satisfied with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Let's then open the roll on twenty-three, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes, so ordered. Next.
Mr. President, can I ask the item to go forthwith, please?
Forthwith, forthwith on that.
And, Mr. President, at this point, would you like to adjourn the special and return to the regular?
Yes.
Very good, sir. That brings us to item fifteen, called special for cards.
Item fifteen, and we have, Mr. Wezar, you want to go first or want me to take the cards?
Cards, please.
Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, I want to thank you for your public comment. You've completed your time today on this item. The clerk has just informed me, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. I want to say Scott, is it Carl Scott? Carl Scott from L.A. Can, Carl, come on up, Carl.
Excuse me, we had, put the cards in order of our speakers.
I just call them as I see them, as I can read them. Go ahead, Carl.
Okay. My name is Carl Scott, I'm with Los Angeles Community Action Network and we are here to oppose, CLA opposed expansion operation of the Healthy Street Program for the budget of twenty-fourteen to twenty-fifteen. We were here a couple of weeks ago with our Dirty Divide Report that we submitted to everyone and also a mapping of it and we gave also recommendation, which is, one of them was to shift the current political and government priority resources from criminalization to housing, place adequate numbers of trash cans in Skid Row with frequent disposal, frequent trash collection in Skid Row, immediately increase the number of restroom facility available to the residents, frequently clean Skid Row restrooms and ensure toilet paper, soap, and hot waters are available. Provide water sources for Skid Row residents, install hygiene centers at the local parks and other accessible locations. And these recommendations would help with the public, these, most importantly, these would help show that L.A. is a truly diverse city and these recommendations also would help with the public work with their recommendations to the city by developing, and our final recommendation is developing a community health council to address these issues for the long term for Skid Row. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Diaz.
Good morning, city council members, and thank you for paying attention to this very important issue. Well, sorry, I'm Steve Diaz with the Los Angeles Community Action Network. While we support the budget allocation for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen and understand that's a much-needed resource to the community, we have staunch concerns for the three-point-seven million dollar allocation for the year of twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen. For example, a social service provider in the CAO report is mentioned of getting an additional two-hundred-thousand dollars to expand bathroom access for about four hours a day, yet there are other social service providers within the community who are expanding bathroom access to twenty-four hours a day without one penny from the city. Furthermore, in the CAO's report, there's an additional ten trash cans being proposed for Skid Row to bring the total cost, to bring a total net number of trash cans to twenty-seven at a cost of over four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the community. That averages out to about sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred dollars per trash can. What other part in the city are there trash cans that cost that much? When I walked down in front and came into this building, there was over six trash cans in front. That means that over a hundred grand will be paid in trash... That means that over 100 grand will be paid in trash cans just if we're going by the same math for the trash cans in front of City Hall. This makes absolutely no sense, and the city council should take leadership on this role and ensure that if such a budget allocation is being moved forward, it meets the compliance standards set by the county, the county health department and its original recommendations to the city around health, the health crisis in Skid Row, and B, reexamine the costs associated with the report. $16,800 for a trash can makes no sense, and an eight-year-old could do that math, and I think we all can do that math as well in a time of budget crisis. Thank you.
Raquel Beard, Raquel. Raquel Beard.
Good morning, I'm Raquel Beard, Central City East Association. The Central City East Association wishes to thank all of the members of the city family who came together to evaluate the current needs of Skid Row and to identify the path forward. We understand the city's deep financial constraints, and we know that the decision to commit resources at this level is a significant one. CCEA has been vocal about the critical public health situation on the sidewalks of Skid Row. Our board chairman, Larry Roush, has met with many of you personally to express our deep concerns about the existence of conditions that breed disease and infestation. The extent of the sanitation emergency on Skid Row is something that would never be allowed in any other community in Los Angeles. People lying in their own filth on the sidewalks of Los Angeles should be inconceivable, but it does exist just a few blocks away from here. The expansion of Operation Healthy Streets will attack this situation, even this commitment won't eradicate the problem, unfortunately, but it will make a significant dent, and we are grateful. But please do not forget the underlying cause. The city and the county must come together on a comprehensive plan for Skid Row. We desperately need to get people off the sidewalks and away from the predatory actions of those who only intent is to keep them in their misery. Thank you.
Beverly? I want to say, Dog, Beverly? From L.A. Can?
Beverly.
It may not be as good as handwriting as I have, I apologize here.
St. Herman?
No, I got to get, General, you're General, I see the G is not a B, I apologize that. General Dogan, is it?
Yeah, that's it.
All right, General.
All right, thank you. General Dogan, Skid Row residents, and we, the Skid Row residents, oppose the 2014, 2015 proposal budget for Operation Healthy Streets. We oppose the proposal because it doesn't address our reality of the situation, nor does it address the violations the city received from the public health department. None of you council members give a damn about Skid Row, or we, or you would have been spoken out about this long time ago. For years, homeless residents are forced to take their GR and disability checks to buy supplies to clean your streets. It wasn't until the city received an FUU on your report card from the public health department that you want to publicly appear as though you're concerned. For over a year, we have met with Weezer's office to stop the apartheid conditions downtown and to bring resources to Skid Row, and all we got was 10 trash cans only to have you come take them back. You cannot deny that there's a dirty divide downtown between the haves and the haves not. West of Main Street, you have got street furniture, exercise equipment, parklets, green gardens, and dog water fountains, where east of Main Street, we ain't got nothing. We can't even get a damn trash can. And why is it every time when something is finally proposed for Skid Row, it goes to salaries and poverty pimps? We demand that you follow the recommendations set forth and laid out by community residents in the L.A. Can's dirty divide. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a Walter Fears? Joseph Thomas? Marion Fogler? Marion, come on. I see you in those sunglasses.
I'm just warming up here.
Okay, and I need Walter Fears and Joseph Thomas. Yes.
Okay, I want to let you know that I hear the frustration and the disregard to treat people with dignity and humanity. These are people who are, you know, people who are American black people, I mean, Mexican, I mean, American Mexicans, they're all Americans, and, you know, we need to be helping our own here. This is so important that we need to treat our city the same as across one street to another. We can't just say, well, these trash cans are going to be more money because it's in the designated area. That's not right. This is acting like a ghetto. Can't go, can't go on like this. We got to treat these people the same as all of us. If we, we got to bridge the gap and understand, we got to unite, because if we don't, we're going to be in trouble. The humanity, the human being, the human race is in trouble, because we got monsters in the Middle East that want to kill us, in, 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 oh, it's terrible. Anyway, I just saw a guy with, you know, his head decapitated, so it's pretty upsetting. So these people want our, want us dead, and we need to unite, and we don't need to be dividing our city, we need to unite our city and help Skid Row. We need to bring them on board and have them the same as the rest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. No applause, please. Mr. Fears? Followed by, do we have, is Joseph Thomas? Go right ahead, sir.
Good morning. Assalamu alaikum and shalom. I've been a resident of Skid Row since 2005. I'm a college fed, a college graduate, I'm a veteran, and I've been living my life for the past 10 years as an activist and an artist. I am Skid Row. Skid Row is America. There's a Skid Row in every 51 state in this country. The Skid Row is made up of elderly, retirees, disabled, homeless, transgenders, employed, unemployed. But our Skid Row is particular because we have the largest homeless population, we have the largest recovery population, and we have the largest reentry population in the country. Now, this is a 52-block square area. This is a community whose voice has come before this council for years voicing our needs. We've done our research, submitted our own research, which you have blatantly, over the years, continued to disregard. Our voice, again, in this matter, on this proposal, is a resounding no. We ask that, in the future, that we, Skid Row, have more access, more input, more transparency in these decisions that are directly affecting our...
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Thomas? Joseph Thomas, Mr. Herman, and Ms. Autry.
Good morning, my name is Joseph Thomas. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Community Action Network, also a resident, and also an individual that's been, that I am a veteran, and I've lived on the streets for seven years. And when I say live on the streets for seven years, I mean on the streets and not inside. What has come to my knowledge, or what I think that you think is, that you have to be reminded that this is not the Levant that's about property. This is about public health. This is about when we don't have trash cans, and when you feel that since we are not bunker hill, you have to take the trash cans and you put it over there in the art district. This is about people of color, this is about people like me, this is about brown people, and because we don't have the respect and we're being treated like third-world people, we don't deserve that. We don't have a drinking fountain, but a dog does. We don't have a place to take a shower if we're homeless, but that's all right, but you want to hype about the filth and everything like that when you perpetrated that yourself. So, you know, don't pass the buck to the next desk all the time, because we're tired of that. I've been out here, I am now 65 years old, and I still got to stand up here and let you know, did you learn anything in life? Get with it, get with the program, do your job.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Herman, followed by Ms. Autry.
Angelinos of Los Angeles, such sensitivity when it comes to the homeless population, a disregard to humanity, the sensitivity. Mr. Kares, can I have your attention over there, and please keep it down?
Speak to the item.
This has to do with the unappropriated uncertainties of what you do, which is harm, harm to a population of people who are homeless, to the disabled who are homeless, to those with health issues who are homeless, and you have no regard. And the most important people today in our society are VAs, and they live on the streets of L.A., homeless, nowhere to go. Thank to you, Mr. Weezer, for your gentrification of removing our homeless population, a group of people, a community in Los Angeles, just because you want L.A. Live to look bright and beautiful. What a hypocrisy of local government. So I say to you, all these constituents that got up here to speak, thank you for your presentation here, because it shows the world, the world that we're becoming a third-world country in Los Angeles. In this golden state of California, for what reason? Our greed and selfishness to provide for homelessness. We have a budget, we can make a budget, we can create a budget to save our homeless population of people who have a right in America, who are American, who are American, Mr. Labange, because as you speak to Ms. Martinez, these Americans came here to let you know that they are upset, dissatisfied, which are incompetent to provide for homeless people. We need bathrooms, we need trash cans, but yes, but not these false charges to our Department of Justice and to the city. Right? So Leo Berger, who came here years ago, would say bullshit. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Autry? Please come forward. Don't run, Ms.
Yes, thank you for an opportunity to address the city council. You are responsible for the homeless, you have created it, this is a community that is engineered, in one of the richest cities in the country, if not one of the richest in the world, with less than two miles to the west, Nob Hill, okay, with a significant number of millionaires, if not one or two billionaires. It is a disgrace, okay? The two or three blocks from where I live, at Sixth and Spring, I have to see mostly black people, people of color, and veterans in squalor, okay? Where there's horse shit on the street because the police won't pick it up, breeding disease, it's ridiculous. You have resources, you refuse to use it because you do not want to use it to help these people. It's breeding disease, genetic experiments, human sacrifice, ritual, sex slaves, whatever you want, it's a reservoir for your ritual, and you know this is the truth that you try to cover up and hide every day. I want to say that this has nothing to do with the Levant issue or the Levant measure, because the Levant measure is relative to personal property. This is a public health issue, okay? So we're going to reveal that so that you can use these resources to help the people that you do not want to help, that you're pushing into the trash and using the police to dispose of, okay? So we want this money to be used to create hygienic centers for women, for veterans, many of whom are Vietnam veterans who need these resources. There are no seats. Where I live, there are seats, there are pocket parks, there are places for little dogs to urinate. You have nothing for the human beings on Skid Row. I don't even live on Skid Row, but I frequent it, and it's a disgrace. If you wanted to help these people, you would. Use the resources to create a more hygienic environment so the people who can recover their life skills can reenter the community with some type of functional probability or possibility of doing so with respect. You have the money, I don't know how you people can live with yourselves. This is a racial issue, it's a genocide of black people, people of color, again, you do not want to look at. So this is not a trash. These people can be recycled, so use the money to do that.
Ms. Autry, thank you. No applause. Please, no applause. It's a disruption. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, as you know, this item is before us after several discussions that this council had along with our city attorney to think about what we can do to support the activities on Skid Row, given some of the litigation that is going on. And if you look at the bigger picture of issues of homelessness across the country, it all starts, in my view, that recognizing we do have one of the largest homeless populations in the country. But secondly, some of the formulas that the federal government uses to disperse their funds disadvantages this city in many respects. Our lobbyists in Washington, D.C. have been fighting those formulas for many years so that we could change them. But secondly, those social service dollars that come to this area primarily go to the county for disbursement. And our responsibility, the way it stands now in terms of our direct official jurisdiction, is to ensure that the public health and safety of all people in public spaces are protected and well-served. It is, it is a disgrace on Skid Row, and we have not done a good job. Thankfully, a few years ago, when we started Healthy Streets, it did a lot to clean up, clean up a very disgraceful place. And unfortunately, these, this million dollars or so that's going to help that Healthy Streets effort is just another drop in the bucket, but it is something, and I think it's worthwhile for us to engage in this and try to do more to keep the streets safe in that area. Ultimately, what we need to do is put more money in this. Ultimately, what we need to do is to have better coordinated approach to homelessness in the area with the county that has the majority of money that disperses in the Skid Row area. And ultimately, we have to do what United Way has been advocating for a very long time, more permanent supportive housing on a decentralized area in the county, not just in Skid Row, and we need to get away from policies that no longer work for us like containment, which was what we've been doing for decades, putting people in Skid Row where the problems have gotten worse. So with that, I do have a few questions for the CAO. I want to thank the CAO for putting this proposal together. I recall that this came about at our city attorneys urging that there must be some things we can do now prior to the litigation being resolved. And Mr. Santana, as the maker of this proposal, can I ask you a few questions, please?
Mr. Kares.
If I could just take one second, because I may have to leave for an MWD meeting. If I could just ask that we reconsider item 1A to continue that for two weeks.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration on item 1A. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
And you want to continue to win?
Continue it for two weeks.
Okay, and Mr. Weezer, we're going to need, Mr. Kares, we're going to need you to stay for a moment, so if we could begin.
Sure, just quickly, one thing that did stand out for me was in the, basically, I have two questions. I think overall, I want to thank you for finding money to put into this effort. Like I mentioned in my opening remarks, we do need more funding available for efforts like this. The Healthy Streets Initiative we started a few years ago has been, has proven very successful, we've got to do more of it. But in this instance, there were some comments made about trash cans and how expensive it is to put a single trash can out there. And these are not the only trash cans that are being put out there. For example, my office, through our discretionary funding, we've been doing what we can to open up more bathrooms, to clean more, clean the bathrooms on a more consistent basis, to keep drug dealers out of these bathrooms, to also keep some parks open. So we see the dire straits that we're in in the area, but is it accurate in terms of one of the public speakers, what they said, how expensive it is to put a trash can out in the street?
Thank you, Councilman. It does, just a nice isolation, that the cost does seem unusually high, that we could certainly have sanitation explain specifically why it's so high, but it's my understanding that most of the cost is driven by the labor cost.
By the labor cost?
Yes. So these are trash cans that have to be checked on a regular basis, and they're done manually versus through a machine, so it's part of what's driving the cost.
And so this, the cost here, not only the actual trash can, but what it costs to maintain the trash cans?
That is correct.
That's also what's included here. So it's not just, we're putting a trash can out there, it's costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars for that, it is the maintenance of those trash cans.
That is correct.
And before I go into my next question, just, can you let us know how much those trash cans are costing, sir, from sanitation?
Good morning, Adel Hashkalili, Assistant General Counsel for Sanitation. With me is Lisa Maori, our Chief Financial Law Officer. The biggest cost for the service of these trash cans, they have to be done manually. We tried to do automated trash cans, and those that not work, they were vandalized and, and were causing a lot of impact on the community more than helping. So working with your office and a lot of the community members, we decided to go with a different kind of trash cans. They have to be chained, and they have to be unlocked every time we have to service them. They have to... They have to be done manually, and they have to be done at least twice a day, seven days a week. So the cost that we estimate is based on the actual labor that has to be done as compared to the service that we do on a lot of areas in the city that has to be done through an automated system. Now we have to stop the truck, get out of the truck, and service, and then the additional work that has to be done is sweeping around the trash can and actually cleaning around it, and that's done twice a day as a minimum.
Got it. My other, my final question is this, is there any funding in this for a health inspector? I know that we have discussed in the past the possibility of contracting out with the county to do some health inspections, and we were told that we do have the authority to hire health inspectors. Are there any, are we going to move forward with that?
The responsibility will be with us in sanitation. As part of the proposal that you have before you, in addition to the cleanup that we do on the comprehensive cleanup and the spot cleaning, which happens, is going to happen now twice a month, and the increasing of the comprehensive cleaning that includes health inspectors from the Bureau of Sanitations, that environmental compliance officers are trained to do this, we are adding two inspectors that will be in the street, patrol in the streets of Skid Row on a daily basis to inspect the health conditions and really navigate or direct any cleanup that needs to be done and the priority of the cleanup. So I think that's going to be, it's in the proposal that's before you, and with your approval, I think that will be implemented very quickly.
Great, thank you, and that concludes my remarks. I do think, like I mentioned, this is a drop in the bucket for what really needs to occur there. There are some larger issues at play here that many of the public speakers brought up. The solutions to that really lie in better coordination with the city and the county as to how the social service dollars, the majority of dollars spent in that area are spent, and continue to advocate for the federal government to change its formula and to comply and move forward to decentralizing these services. Downtown Skid Row is bursting at the seams, we can no longer contain our homeless population there, and we should do more but at a decentralized approach. Thank you.
Mr. Price? Now, Mr. Price is on the board, I'll get you next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank, first of all, Councilman Weezer for his leadership on this very troubling issue and staff for the attention you've paid to it. Certainly, no other part of the city probably is impacted more by Skid Row than the Ninth District. You know, we share populations back and forth, and so I fully support this proposal. I think it is a start, we certainly would like to see more in Skid Row and citywide. And we certainly need to have that discussion about what happens in other parts of the city. Hopefully, this can be a template that will be useful. But we have to start providing more humane treatment to those in need, I think. Certainly, we have to have better coordination, and the city is a part of that, the city is not the total player in that process. So we really have to, I think, collaborate closer with our allies, with other stakeholders, certainly other levels of government at the county level, state and federal level, to seek the kinds of resources that we are going to need in order to really adequately address these issues. And so I think this is a great start, it's not a perfect start, but it's a good start, and I think it certainly puts us on the road for establishing the kinds of programs and policies citywide that will start to really impact this very troubling issue of homelessness that affects us all. Thank you.
Mr. Laban.
C.A.O. on veterans and the outreach from the Veterans Administration, tell us about that.
Well, certainly, the President and the administration has made it a priority to eliminate homelessness among veterans, and there's been a huge campaign and outreach being done, not just in the Skid Row area, but throughout the city and throughout the country, to try to eliminate homeless veterans.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. If we could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to the next items. Mr. Fourth width, Mr. Clerk, I believe we're going to go take up items fourth width on fourteen as well. Let's take up items, I believe, nine through twelve at this time.
Yes, sir, those would be items nine through twelve.
Okay, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I'd like, we call them all together, but I'd like to just make some general comments, and then if we can vote on them individually, because everyone may not have the same view on each one. I asked the city CLA's office to come up, who prepared the reports. Colleagues, these are four reports on federal legislation that will eventually impact, if passed, the city's ability in many instances to deal with our local control and a variety of other issues. And I think it's important that we also acknowledge that some of this legislation is contradictory of a recent memorandum published by the Department of Justice and how they intend to investigate medical marijuana. And there's some very recent articles that were published by the Harvard University and others, Northwestern University, about the casual use of marijuana and its impact on the brain, and also the recent articles that were published that talk about the issue of moderate use of marijuana and its impact on heart issues. Some of the literature, even though they are supportive of studying marijuana, have clearly said that before you move forward, there should be rigorous evaluation and clinical testing. So let me ask you, on the first item nine, if you can walk us through the analysis by the CLA's office, and then I'll have some comments on that.
Chris Concepcion with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. For item nine, that is H.R. 689, and that pertains to the rescheduling of marijuana and medical use of marijuana. Essentially, what this bill would do is it would require the Secretary of Health and Human Services to reschedule marijuana, which is currently under the Controlled Substances Act, is currently listed as a Schedule I drug. They would require HHS to categorize it as something other than Schedule I or II, which leaves schedules III through V, which all have permitted medical uses.
Okay, let me just say also, in addition to that, the issues that are concerned, without any documented study, they want to move it out of the direction of the FDA and the DEA, who currently controls the scheduling. And that's without a study to determine, it's no longer a drug, it's just a matter of moving it to another authority.
Correct.
The other thing I think is important for us to be aware of, this legislation conflicts, as you read it, with its own wording. On the one hand, they want medical marijuana to be treated as any prescription drug, but on the other hand, they want to exempt it from all of the regulations of prescription drugs. And so these are things that I think are absolutely essential that we're aware of. They want the state to oversee marijuana, although the states have no authority to oversee other drugs. And so I think that the issue of how it's written is conflicting and adds even more confusion to the debate about federal and state jurisdiction over marijuana in general, but specifically medical marijuana.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, appreciate you calling on me. Colleagues, I rise today to actually make a motion that we receive and file all four of these items today. I think that the four items before us today, while well-intentioned, go against the general direction that this council wants to go in in several cases, and is inconsistent with a lot of the principles and the values that we hold dear. Three of these deal with medical marijuana, let me just talk about that for a second. One of the federal bills would reclassify marijuana so that it would match the state definition, so that if the state of California says medical marijuana is cool, the state would go along with that. I think one of the things we've wanted for a lot of time, since we've been dealing with medical marijuana dispensaries here, is some level of consistency between the state and the federal positions. We've been caught between a rock and a hard place of a federal government saying, this is the law, and the state saying, this is the law, and we've dealt with the mess. This bill would help ease that mess, and Mr. Parks is asking us to oppose that. The other two deal with medical marijuana patients, and I want to think about my predecessor, Mr. Rosendahl, when I do this, because Mr. Rosendahl spoke very clearly that he's alive today because of his use of medical marijuana, that it was his ability to use medical marijuana that gave him an appetite back and gave him the ability to sleep back, which gave him the opportunity to fight back his cancer and get to the place of remission today. One of these bills in Congress says that if you're arrested for using medical marijuana, you can use as an affirmative defense the fact that you're using it medicinally. I think that's a position that we should not oppose, I think that's one we should support. The other says that if you're arrested for using marijuana and you're using it medically, the state should not be able to seize your property or your possessions. I don't think any one of us would have wanted Mr. Rosendahl's home to have been seized if he had been arrested for medical marijuana. The fourth bill here deals with proposed federal legislation that would decriminalize marijuana entirely and allow states to regulate it like it does alcohol. I think there's three of these things where the will of this body is in line with the intent of the legislation and would not want to oppose it, the medical marijuana ones. I think there's probably significant division on this body about whether or not to entirely decriminalize marijuana, which I certainly would like to do. So my recommendation would be that we receive and file all four of these. I also think it's probably worth noting that with a Republican-led House of Representatives, I think it's highly unlikely that Speaker Boehner is ever going to schedule any four of these, so that just underscores the need, I think, to receive and file. Thank you.
Mr. Kurets.
Mr. President, pardon me, that motion would need a second.
I'll second it. Mr. Kurets.
Yeah, just briefly, I think Mr. Bonin outlined what our position should be very well. Basically, these are common sense measures that are in sync with what we've tried to do in the city and what the state has done, and the motion, the motion asks that we not take positions in opposition to everything that we've done at the state and local level on this issue. It makes no sense to try and decriminalize medical marijuana and then oppose a motion that does the same thing, I mean, oppose a legislation that does the same thing. These are four bills we actually should be supporting, even the one that seems the most divisive, which is decriminalization, that basically just says the state government is the one that makes those decisions, the federal government will no longer intervene. So all four of these make sense, I think, in the interest of some level of unity on this issue. I don't think we should turn around and pass all four, which is actually the policy that would be in sync with everything else that we've done. But I would ask that we support the motion by Mr. Bonin to receive and file this.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I think if you want to go on record of basically continuing to confuse the argument about medical marijuana, and I think if you look at it very narrowly from the comments we made earlier, you might come to, you come to that conclusion, but if you look at it more broadly and dealing with number nine, as I mentioned before, even in the text of the legislation, they want specifically to make marijuana or medical marijuana treated as any other pharmaceutical product, but yet they're eliminating all the regulations that allow that. And number 10, although they talk about the issue of medical marijuana dealing with the medical purposes, is totally inconsistent with how DOJ's filing guidelines are dealing with it, and it also removes marijuana in general from both FDA and DEA constitutional responsibility. And if you look at the studies that people have talked about most recently, even those that are supportive, say you need rigorous testing and clinical studies before you move any further. Number 11, if you look at the removing marijuana from all schedules and totally decriminalize it, you're taking a responsibility of moving marijuana, not just medical marijuana, but marijuana to the Federal Alcohol Administration as opposed to the current DEA. Also, on number 12, the courts oversee forfeiture, they are the ones that evaluate the evidence, and so to add a federal legislation that removes forfeiture as an ability, a tool for law enforcement, appears to ignore the federal prosecution and placing this under state jurisdiction. So I would say if you want to go on record of saying that you want to see marijuana loosened, even though the studies are reflecting even more so that there are dangers to particularly our young people, if we truly want to make this an issue of national importance, what we should be supporting is that the FDA and the DEA provide funds to study and analyze marijuana, much as UCLA is currently asking for, and we have a motion in the council now asking that we support UCLA as being one of the folks that study it, then based on the study of marijuana, that we make decisions as opposed to just declaring it after all of these decades as not being a drug, seems to fly in the face of how we create medicine throughout the city. None of us, throughout the nation, none of us ever voted on medicine in the past, we've never voted on aspirin, we've never voted on anything that we take. We are now saying the state of California, if this passes, should be in a position to test and analyze drugs and be the foremost authority of the quality, when that's left to the FDA on every other medication. So I'd say if you want to continue cloud the issue, you can receive and file it, or if you want to go on record and show that these are issues that are of concern, I would suggest that we vote on them.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you, and I appreciate Mr. Parks bringing this up, and there's certainly, you know, looking through this bill, there may be some inconsistencies in these bills, but I don't think it's inconsistent of us to file and table these bills. We're just saying we're not going to support them, we're not necessarily, we're not going to oppose them, we're not going to support them. That's what this motion, which I'm supporting to table them, will do. We could, in the future, fund studies or, you know, work to fund studies to look at marijuana, and that's, I think we'd have agreement on that. As someone, I've tried to do legislation in this space on a state level, trying to, H.R. 1300, trying to create more regulations on the state level, it's very difficult because of the inconsistencies between our state proposition, our local measures, and the federal law. So I would, I certainly do not want to oppose these measures because I think opposing them just institutionalizes the inconsistencies that are there that are making it very difficult to give people basic treatment and to figure out sensible regulations. So it may be a long convoluted way of saying, I support the motion to table these amendments and to not actually insert ourselves into these issues at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. And Mr. Parks, the UCLA motion will be heard in rules, my committee, on this Friday. With that said, Mr. Clerks, our first vote would be on Mr. Bonin's.
That is correct, sir, it would be for items nine through twelve and to receive and file those matters.
Okay, so Mr. Bonin would be requesting an aye vote and Mr. Parks a no vote. Okay, with that said, let's, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, two noes.
Okay, that passes, and if we could move to, is it Mr. Laban? Thank you.
Absolutely.
You have item 18.
Eighteen.
Anyway, thank you, guys. Go ahead, Mr. Kurets.
If we could reconsider 1A and delay that for two weeks.
Oh, no, I thought I already did that, so without objection.
I don't think we.
Without objection, we will do that. Through telepathy, Mr. Kurets, I sent that message to the clerk, okay? All right, Mr. Laban.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is an item that calls for an ad hoc committee for the Special Olympics. As you know, the Special Olympics come in July of 2015. I have Jeff Carr here, former deputy mayor. Jeff, sit there, just give us a briefing on the status of the Special Olympics and how Los Angeles could be a part of. I know Mr. Buscagno is way ahead of everybody at his work in Zambidro.
Thank you, Councilman, it's good to see some of you again, and we are excited about the 2015 Special Olympics that are coming to Los Angeles next summer. We'll have 7,000 athletes, 3,000 coaches from 177 countries around the world. It'll be the largest event held in the city of L.A. since the 1984 Olympics, and it'll actually be the largest sporting event in the world next summer. And so it's going to also generate about $415 million of economic activity in the city, we're going to, we've already tied up about 40,000 beds, hotel nights, and so it's going to be a great event for the city. It's also going to create a lot of awareness about people with intellectual disabilities. It's also going to create a lot of awareness about people with intellectual disabilities, and I think you'll see some of their abilities and what they're able to accomplish in sport. So we're excited to be a part of that, and I appreciate Councilman Laban creating the ad hoc committee. We look forward to, and Council President Wesson, we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to keep the council updated on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Mr. Carr, thank you, members. I just asked for an aye vote. This is something that's good for Los Angeles and Southern California and the Special Olympics. Thank you.
Okay, on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, forthwith, where does that bring us, Mr. Clerk? No, we didn't have to take cards, Mr. Clerk, on 18, is that my understanding? There wouldn't, I don't have any cards. I don't have a card on 18. Did anybody find it? Okay, so this, on 18, vote for reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Herman, let's start his time. Now go right ahead.
When it comes to the relative establishment of the ad hoc committee on Special Olympics, isn't there a greater group of people in this world today, those who are part of the Special Olympics, our children, our youth, and adults who participate in Special Olympics? We established the ad hoc committee on the Special Olympics to oversee and coordinate the city's various efforts for World Special Games in 2015, which will be held in Los Angeles on behalf of all you disabled persons, people, human beings. So I know that Mr. Laban's and Mr. Englander will not discriminate against any of you, all of you who are disabled, because they're paying attention and they know that you have a right, under disability, to share and participate in programs, activities throughout Los Angeles.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this again. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Forthwith on that item, Mr. Clerk, that brings this body where?
Mr. President, that brings counsel to general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Jose Martinez, Marion Fogler. Where's Miriam, Donna? Okay.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I'd like to remind people here, City Council, that I came out of a Jewish woman's womb, okay? A few of you up here have also come out of a Jewish woman's womb. And my 71 years almost on this planet, I have never seen a level of anti-Semitic sexism devoted against what you call, and some of you up there have actually used the term, I don't know if Magic Johnson uses, the Jew bitch. And the Jew bitch is Shelly Sterling, the Jew bitch that stands in the face of Magic Johnson taking over this team. I can't believe an vile Jewish self-haters like the editorial writer, the piece of self-hating Jewish Romanian Jewish garbage, Robert Greene, as a Jewish man, forget about what, now, this is the latest rumor I have heard from anti-Semites. Now listen to this one. The reason that Magic Johnson has the AIDS virus is that Shelly Sterling, a number of years ago, disguised herself as a nurse and gave him a flu shot with the AIDS virus. People in the street are hearing this vile anti-Semitism. And I'm telling you, 6 million Jews died, and if you and many, many Jews were in favor of it, they looked the other way. But I'm telling you right now, the black anti-Semitism that comes out of the mouth of Herb Wesson will not be tolerated in America. It will not be tolerated. You may consider her a Jew bitch, but I consider her a Jewish woman. And don't spit and vomit all over a herb, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Martinez. Okay, if not, Ms. Fogler, followed by Donna Peirman, Marion. Come on.
Okay, folks, you know, I have on my phone here picture of a gentleman in Syria that was beheaded recently by Al Qaeda, or I mean extremist. We got extremists in Yemen that said that they're going to come out and kill us. So if we don't have our weapons, our 50 caliber guns, handguns, our assault weapons back, the American people might as well just fall over and be dead, because that's what they're going to do. They're going to come here, and one of them is a smart guy, knows how to install a bomb on a plane, and that's all he needs, is have people come here and fly planes into our buildings and people and all that. We are in danger. And the State Department and Obama doesn't care, he's, he's right now is blackmailing gun stores across the nation. Obama, the Obama administration, is telling the gun stores they cannot have credit cards, banks, to help them, customers to buy guns. That's right, folks, this is happening right now. This is from the Eric Holder administration and Obama. So I'm just letting you know, folks, call the White House, tell them you need the right to bear and keep our, your Second Amendment, all your rights back, get rid of gun control. They are a bunch of racists, okay? You know, we can't just be just separated here, we need to unite. And we know people in schedule, all, we're all Americans, we need to be together because we've got a serious problem. And we need the video conferencing turned back on so that I can be raising these issues and making the American people aware of the significant dangers that we are in right now. We are in a mess, and you people don't care about the budget, I can tell right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna Peirman, followed by Henry Marine.
Thanks for letting me do that budget hearing. You didn't let me do it. Anyway, we need to get rid of the gun control laws, we need to protect ourselves from terrorists, from formal terrorists from Yemen or against America. Our country needs bombs and guns to fight, fight them. Los Angeles City Council doesn't want to hear this, that's why they closed our Van Nuys video conferencing. They don't want to hear the voice of the people. In the meantime, monsters in Syria are killing Christians. This is important, Magic Johnson, we have monsters in Yemen who wants us dead. We need to all unite together, we need to, all Americans need to be together and not divide on racial things, we need to come to an understanding. United we stand, divided we fall. We also need to stop all street people from pocketing $69 million in the city of Los Angeles. Stop Garcetti from the eve of construction, we are on the eve of construction, making city employees have to make up the difference. And the business gets tax breaks and Westfield, we need to stop having the, giving deals to Westfield, stop giving deals to the businesses' tax, and stop bringing it on the backs of the city employees who are, work hard for their living. And in the meantime, we need to bring back video conferencing. It's very essential, we need to have video conferencing back in Van Nuys and San Pedro so the people have the right to speak on these items. That's very wrong how you, you spend millions of dollars and you won't worry about the smallest amounts you can bring, bringing the voice of the people. The voice of the people is very essential. All you care is about giving tax breaks to businesses and Garcetti's little wonderful plan on having a huge constructions all over the place and taking on the backs of the city employees. How dare you? How dare you?
Mr. Marine, followed by Daniel Jones, followed by Jose Martinez. Yes, sir.
Hey, Mr. Parks, I mean, Ms. Parks? Ms. Parks, are you still my representative?
No, 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 just speak, just speak, Henry.
Well, I'm speaking. As you see, I have no public representation from my CD8 representative. You don't see no union representatives around here. So how come y'all keep listening to my CD8, CD8 representative and my union representatives instead of listening to me about the money y'all sheltered from my pay? He's just making, running the interest bill up on all that CRA funds that y'all sheltered from in the first place. Y'all took FEMA funds so we can fix this building up for the earthquake, as you've been taking all this money, sheltering it into the general fund, sheltering it in the union banks, and that accounting fund, why come? He always talking about he's finding money here. How you going to find money you ain't accounting for in the first place? And where's Mr. Krikory in here, telling us people there ain't no public comment on the money? If you look at paragraph 10 of MOU 35, it shows, oh, employees don't have no right to voice and vote in grievance in paying benefit matters. Now what kind of damn country we living in right now? We got dictators? You know, Hitler started out as a goddamn politician too, until he got his police to go do his dirty work. And we getting too many goddamn police around here too, we need more, smaller people than police. Police started all the goddamn riots in this town, y'all want to complain about it? The black folks that was tearing out the buildings, getting their heads beat in the first place. Now come on, stand for something. Stop going, rolling down here like a snowball, head at the bell. Thank you.
Okay, okay, Henry, you know how to curse. All right, Mr. Jones, Mr. Martinez, and I think this is you, Mr. Herman, you got to write your name. Mr. Jones.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Jones. Good morning to the President Council and all the esteemed council members. I've just, it's been a while since I've been here. I truly treasure City Hall, I treasure everything about this country, and this is, I want to say hello to the worldwide core of public opinion. It's my opinion, every time somebody smiles at me, I'm in the city of Los Angeles, I am with the city of angels, and it does work both ways. Mr. Wesson, this hasn't been a time of reflection, this has been a time of wonderment, grandeur, scope, greater appreciation for whatever I was given by my parents and by the surrounding world that I live in. And I truly do respect you, sir, because everything I've ever said has been, is been, well, it's been for free, it's been from my heart, it's, all the things that I've learned were given to me, and I can only express them here in a quorumed body. And Mr. Wesson, the depreciation I have for the world around me can only be in part due to you personally, because I've never taken personally, and that's what I've grown from it. I have many things about the way we get along in this country, and it has been a privilege and an exercise of my rights to express that. And I truly have felt that whatever I might say in the future, I have a positive one in this country, and if anything has been broadcast across the world, you're partly responsible. We all respect due process, this is part of the process, and you're, and you're due as far as I'm concerned, and that goes along with all the fellow city council members. I do see inklings, I do see positive directions, but you will see me back because I was taught one thing, and that's to double check. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is Mr. Martinez here? Okay, I believe this is you, Mr. Herman. You need to come speak.
I wrote Brown Act. Raffi, R-A-F-F-I, Yardie Men, from Mr. Kevin DeLeon's office. Every house is constructed by someone, but the one who constructed all is God, Hebrews, not the chosen people, but God. And I won't give a name because all of you practice religion of God. But when it comes to sensitivity of people, I believe Mr. Weezer has no apathy for those who are homeless, and many of you fall in that category, and I won't talk about you other than Mr. Weezer for his gentrification of the homeless population under item 15 of this agenda. Neil Kardashevsky for governor, David Evans for comptroller. Why? Why? Because I believe Mr. Neil could do a better job for the state of California. I believe David Evans will do a greater job than what you have done in the last four years of your representation as an assemblyman, and I won't say your name. For we, the people, we Americans deserve more. We want more from this local government from the bottom up, and I continue to advocate for all Angelenos, all Americans. This is not about putting tape on Mr. Herb Wesson's mouth or Mr. Johnson's. No, this has nothing to do with the clippers. I'm talking about city business at local level. And for all you taxpayers, remember this, every house is constructed by someone, but the one who constructed all is God. If you fear God, you will not fear this council here, because you have a right, under the Brown Act, to come here and protest. Thank you.
Okay, that, that, no, come on, you're disrupting. That concludes general public comment. Mr. Clerk, that brings this body to what?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Let's consider them posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay, so announcements, members, I just want to remind you that what we did today, well, we're not going to be meeting tomorrow because of the officer's funeral. We took today's agenda and put a lot of it on, I mean, we took Wednesday's agenda, put a lot of it on today's agenda, and then we're putting some more of it on Friday's agenda. So tomorrow, I'm sure I'll see many of you at the cathedral up the, up the street, so I wanted to just make sure that you realize there will be no council tomorrow. Any other announcements? I don't see any. Let's rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues.
In the back, wait a minute, if we could please rise, sergeants, would you help me? Adjourning motions, if we could get everybody to rise. Mr. Walsh, Ms. Autry, we're getting ready to adjourn. Okay, thank you. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of a great individual who did a lot for the city of Los Angeles and also for Israel and speaks to the diversity of what is Boa Heights here in the city of Los Angeles. I wish to adjourn in memory of Zuvvi Strass. Zuvvi was a man of uncommon courage, kindness, and unsurpassed integrity. In 1938, when he was 11 years old, he and his parents moved from Tucson to Los Angeles. The family rented an apartment in Boa Heights just across from Hollenbach Park. Zuvvi attended Breed Street Elementary School. Zuvvi also attended evening classes in the Folchul, a Jewish people's school located on Soto Street in Boa Heights. As a result, he came in contact with and joined Habanim, a Jewish socialist Zionist youth movement whose groups met in the same building. The family then moved to a rented house in city terrace in East Los Angeles. In 1941, the family moved back to Tucson, and Zuvvi attended the University of Arizona. Zuvvi served in the U.S. Army from June 1945 until November 1946. In June of 1948, Zuvvi immigrated to the newly created state of Israel. There, with his Habanim colleagues, he was one of the founders of Kibbutz GeShur Haziv in the Western Galilee on the shores of the Mediterranean Sea, where he was a member from 1949 to 1959. In 1959, Zuvvi and his family moved to a Moshev, an agricultural cooperative community in the Sharon Valley, where he was a small farmer and citrus grower. Zuvvi then was educated and certified as a tour guide and conducted many tours for many, mainly Americans, Canadians, and Australians visiting Israel. Zuvvi leaves behind to cherish his memory forever, his wife, Ali Yah, a leader in the Israeli peace and justice movement, four daughters, including Mimi Strass. Israeli peace and justice movement, four daughters, including Mimi Stras, former chief of enforcement for Los Angeles City Ethics Commission and a former deputy inspector general of the Metropolitan Transportation Authority, five grandsons, three of whom are serving in the Israeli army, and two son-in-laws, which include Larry Gross, the executive director of the Coalition for Economic Survival in Los Angeles, and a Los Angeles Animal Services Commissioner. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Zuvie Stras, a life well-lived.
Thank, thank you. Any more adjourning motions? Any more adjourning motions? I don't see any, so I, I will take the liberty to adjourn in the memory of LAPD detective Ernest L. Allen, Sr. Most of us heard last Friday at approximately 1:53 that there was a traffic collision approximately 25 yards away from where Officer Lee got into a traffic accident that took his life. This officer, known, nicknamed Big E, unfortunately was killed at the scene. The Beverly Hills Police Department and the California Highway Patrol are investigating this matter. He was only 52 years young, been with this department for over 27 years, was assigned to various areas within the city, 77th Division, Wilshire Division, Rampart, and his last call of duty was the Southwest Station. He was a very loving son, spent time watching basketball games with his mom, and I'm sure she will miss those, those special moments. He did everything that he could to help new detectives, try to point out mistakes, ways to avoid them, and he was just known generally as a really outstanding officer. He programmed with at least three people from my district office because Southwest falls in some of the district that I'm blessed to represent. He leaves behind a fiance, his mom, two children, and two grandchildren. And so if we, I don't, members, this is just becoming so surreal, and I look forward long for the day that we don't have to do this. And so let's just acknowledge his service to the city, his commitment to keep all of us safe, and let's hope that his family is given the strength to move forward. So with that said, seeing no other adjourning motions, this council is adjourned. I will see you tomorrow morning at the cathedral.